Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the City of Warrenville City Council Regular Meeting for June 6th, 2016. May I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Ashower.
Here.
Alderman Berry.
Here.
Alderman Veer is excused. Alderman Davalos.
Here.
Alderman Goodman.
Here.
Alderman Hoffman.
Here.
Alderman Widener.
Here.
Alderman Wilson.
Here.
Thank you only. Would you please stand as you're able and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
My Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get too far along with our presentation here, I would like to introduce our new Assistant City Administrator, Christina White. Welcome, Christina. We hope you have a long and prosperous and substantive career here in Warrenville. You're welcome. Okay, Ron Mensur is up, our Community Development Director, to discuss the Southwest District SubArea Plan and the distillation of all the disparate parts that we've put together to come up with this plan. So, Ron, the floor is yours.
Good evening and thank you, Mayor and City Council. Is that good? I put it right up top. No?
There we go.
All right. If I brought to you an opportunity, an investment opportunity on behalf of the city that required virtually no upfront financial commitment, long-term financial obligation, didn't put the city at any risk, but had the opportunity, number one, transform a very large and underperforming area of our community into a vibrant area of our community, and number two, generate up to $300 million worth, $280 million worth of new private investment and property value growth, is that an investment that you'd be interested in?
You've got our attention, Ron.
Cantera, pre-redevelopment, Cantera today. I think we'd all agree that over the last 30 years, there's been an amazing transformation in the 640 acres that comprise Cantera. 30 years ago, it was an operating gravel pit and concrete batch plant. 640 acres, in that context of the city, it really didn't provide a whole lot of value to the city. Today, on the other hand, it's a vibrant mixed-use development, a world-class development, I would say, and it is really the economic engine for the City of Warrenville. Both in contrast and comparison, we have the Southwest District today. Unlike Cantera, there's been virtually no substantial private development and no or very little private investment in this area over the last three decades. There are some similarities, though, to this area and Cantera of 30 years ago. They're both very large, relatively large areas in the context of the City of Warrenville. This area contains 340 acres, Cantera 640 acres. They're both prominently located along high-quality, well-traveled arterial roadway networks. Unfortunately, again, when we're comparing this area to the Cantera of 30 years ago, both are relatively underdeveloped or undeveloped and don't really bring a whole lot to the table for the city. They aren't adding a material positive impact to the community in their current form. But most importantly, I think the one similarity that I think for tonight's discussion is the most important, is the fact that they both represent a huge opportunity for the city in terms of what they can bring to the table for the city long-term. Obviously, Cantera's made a very positive impact on the city's character, well-being, economic well-being and quality of life over the last 20 years. This area has that same opportunity, in my opinion. Southwest District Future Land Use Plan. In order to seize that opportunity, it's my opinion and recommendation that the City Council make the next big investment into the Southwest District area by adopting the SubArea Plan that you have on your agenda tonight. Why this plan? High-quality development, balances expectations with market realities, preserves, protects, enhances existing neighborhoods, expands and diversifies housing stock, significant new commercial and business park development, last but not least, large increase in land value and tax revenue for the community. From my perspective, these are pretty detailed benefits, but when you look at it from the big-picture standpoint, the biggest benefit that the SubArea Plan that you have in your packet tonight has for the community is that it provides a very clear policy roadmap and a very specific but realistic action guide that the city can use to facilitate high-quality development in this area that will generate long-term positive impacts for the community, both in terms of the quality of life, but also the economic health of the community. Some of the specific benefits that I believe that the plan has for the community is it does a very good job in defining, from Warrenville's perspective, what high-quality development is in the context of the Southwest District. Development that is mixed-use, is coordinated, is not piecemeal, is economic or environmentally responsible. It's also development that includes high-quality urban design characteristics. And finally, but not least, it's development that both expands and connects the city's existing trail path and sidewalk networks. The planning process and therefore the plan itself does a very good job of intentionally balancing the community's expectations, what we heard from the various stakeholders and residents that contributed to the planning process with that of the market realities as vetted out through the development and real estate community. So what we have is a plan that will not just sit on a shelf, that the development community and the private investment community has told us that you adopt this plan, we'll implement it. It's something that they feel is marketable. The plan goes into some detail in defining what tactics and strategies the city can use and implement to preserve, protect, enhance. There's some substantial residential areas that residential neighborhoods in the subarea and adjacent to the subarea. The plan includes a significant or accommodates a significant level of new residential development. The total amount of new residential development will add a large number, potentially a large number of new residents to the community. Under full build-out, the plan calls for up to 900 new housing units. Those residents will support both existing businesses in our community, but they'll also make it possible and economically viable for the large amount of new commercial and business park development to happen in the community. And when I say that, what I mean is that those residents are what is going to make, they're going to make it attractive for private developers to do that type of non-residential development. And then finally, last but not least, is the large increase in property valuation and therefore property taxes in the area. Upon full build-out, the total value of land in this area will increase approximately tenfold. Right now, the land in this area has a combined value of about $30 million. Upon full build-out, it'll probably be north of $300 million. Obviously, the tax, property tax revenue that's going to be generated by that new development is going to be 10 times what it is today. In addition, the commercial and business park development that's anticipated will generate an estimated another additional million-dollar in local taxes to the City of Warrenville, non-property taxes, we're talking about utility taxes, food and beverage taxes, sales taxes, those types of taxes, again, upon full build-out. Will this plan work? That's a legitimate question. I would suggest to you that we have a great local example of how planning can support and facilitate positive development and change in a community, the Cantera development. 30 years ago, the city didn't have a clear, detailed plan, comprehensive plan for how that area was going to evolve from a gravel pit to what it is today. The city did, though, smartly, wisely, hire a group of qualified consultants. They worked closely with the private development sector to develop a very detailed, comprehensive, well-thought-out, flexible land use plan and regulatory structure. It's that plan and structure is what supported, well, it's not only supported, but it's attracted the investment that allowed, private investment that allowed Cantera to evolve to what it is today. It's my belief that the SubArea Plan for the Southwest District will do that same thing for the Southwest District. So in closing tonight, I would strongly recommend and advocate that the City Council accept the Plan Commission's recommendation and adopt the SubArea Plan that you have, the Southwest District SubArea Plan in your agenda packet as an amendment to the city's comprehensive plan, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ron. Council members? Alderman Wilson?
I think this is a fantastic plan, and I think it's been looked at, and I think it gives us here in Warrenville, who I was not here 30 years ago, I mean, been here but not in Warrenville, but it gives us a second chance for a town like Warrenville to have a development that, when you look at Cantera and all the good things that have happened there, and I just think the way this has been laid out, the way it's been presented, and the way it's had residential input through the open meetings that we've had, I think just opens up a whole new ballgame for Warrenville, and I am thoroughly enthused about the potential for it. Well-drone-out plans, and we have the outside help that's given us that technical knowledge to be able to do the, make the choices. And I personally just look upon this as being, again, Cantera number two so far as Warrenville is concerned, and thank you so very much for all the work that you and your staff have done over the course of all these many, many months and years. Thanks.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Davalos?
Yes, I agree completely with Alderman Wilson's comments. Can you just say a few things quickly about the flexibility built into this plan and how it will, in the end, be driven by market conditions and what's going on and some of the things that the consultant group talked to us about? I think it's kind of interesting and important.
Yeah, the report, one of the core foundation building blocks for the report is an acknowledgement that it needs to be flexible. There is some flexibility built right into the plan. An example of that would be these purple areas or these aqua-blue color areas, they're called mixed-use commercial, which is really a designation that basically says, we want it to be some type of commercial, non-residential development, but we're not exactly sure what that might be, but at that location, there's some, there's an ability to have, accommodate a flexible type of use. In addition to that, the language within the plan goes into quite a bit of detail about how the plan should be administered, and it outlines specifically that the city needs to be open to adjustments, oops, to this type of land use pattern, so long as the key principles of the plan are upheld as those adjustments are made. So it is very possible that, for example, if there are certain areas that are shown as commercial or as residential, and we have all these other commercial areas all developed and the residential area is not developed yet, and somebody comes in and says, hey, we want to do some more commercial here, it's a possibility that the city should be open to in the long run.
Okay. Alderman Hoffman?
Yeah, I think it's probably a pretty good idea, have some kind of idea of what direction we're going to go with the development here. My concern is, is how it's kind of locked into with this TIF 4 idea. Other concern is, is, you know, when we added TIF, or no, TIF 1, there was a developer with cash in his hand ready to start developing. Is there any such promise with this area? Is there any developer with cash in his hand ready to start developing?
You know, there are, there are pretty significant, there's no, to answer your question directly, there's no one developer that is ready to assemble all the property that exists in this area. Cantera, on the other hand, was owned and controlled by one property owner, and it made it relatively easy for that property owner to partner with the developer that had the cash in hand, as you said, to facilitate the redevelopment of Cantera. In this area, there is a plethora of property owners with different interests and agendas, but there are some pretty sizable chunks of land that are vacant and available for development. The Climon property and the adjacent residential properties to the north are currently being marketed, and that's about 34 acres. We've got the property up in this neck of the woods, up at the northwest corner of 59 and 56, that was owned by the Singer family, and it's 20 acres of vacant property that's being marketed. It's actually under contract by somebody that's interested in doing a commercial mixed-use development on it. Of course, the city has assembled this seven acres of commercial property. We also have the Anderson property that's actively being marketed. We were told today that that's under contract by a developer to redevelop. That's about 14 acres in size. So there are developers that are anxiously awaiting the city's adoption of this plan so that they can move forward with specific development proposals. I would guess and assume, expect that those proposals will work through our process in some form or another, this, starting this fiscal year.
Okay, yeah, like I say, I don't have any problem supporting the plan as far as how it should be developed. It makes good sense to have some kind of idea on which way we're going to go with the development in that area. I just don't support the TIF, but thank you.
Alderman Widener?
Yeah, thank you for all your efforts on the plan. One of the listed redevelopment goals was to protect the natural features, and I just, when you look at the overview of this, there's an awful lot of water on these sites. I just wonder if you have any thoughts on how we go about creating, you know, I think what is referred to as a high quality and preserving the environment that's out there when there are so many different landowners and so forth. A lot of people treat water in different ways, and I think there's an opportunity here to do some really creative things if we get the right consultants involved, and I just wondered whether you had any thoughts on sustainability of a landscaping plan?
Sure. Well, there's two parts to my answer on that. There is a lot of floodplain, wetland, environmentally sensitive areas in this overall subarea. I think from a regulatory standpoint, just protecting those areas is accomplished to a large degree by compliance with the countywide storm order management floodplain ordinance. It's one of the more restrictive ordinances in the country, and that requires people to preserve and protect, not fill in or eliminate wetlands and floodplain areas. I think the bigger question for the City of Warrenville is what we can do to encourage, incentivize developers to make those wetland, floodplain, environmentally sensitive areas an amenity rather than something they just shove off to the side and, you know, leave out of the development. Obviously, with residential development, it's a lot easier to incorporate those types of areas into your development as an amenity. When you get into a commercial situation, it's a lot harder and more difficult to incorporate those into the development as an amenity. There's still some opportunity, but not as much. The plan does go into some detail and explain the city's objective and expectation that developers that do work out in this area look to see how they can incorporate those areas into their development as an amenity and not just some leftover, something else that they put off in the corner.
I would really like to see that, you know, to develop some attractive features for people and wildlife. Oftentimes, when these areas get fragmented, they lose their value and their appeal, and even though you're preserving them, you're really not protecting them because they degrade over time. And I think with a lot of the landscaping plans, and one of the unfortunate things I think about Cantera is some of the water bodies look good for the first three to five years, you know, with the landscaping and things like that, and they are preserved, but without an active management plan, they really deteriorate over time, inviting invasives and things like that. So I hope that, you know, we can, you know, hire a consultant or somebody to really make this, you know, as attractive as possible and thereby, you know, protecting the natural areas that are out there and making them congruent so that they're, you know, looked at as a benefit and do not degrade as time goes on and as build-out occurs. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Goodman?
Thanks so much for your presentation, Ron, and I also think that Michael Blue of TESCA did a great job in the public hearing of presenting this information in a way that makes it clear to people that none of these land uses are going to change if the property owners don't agree to it, if the people involved who are developing don't put their money behind that idea, if there isn't investment and buy-in from the residents and the people in the community. You know, we can plan all we want, but we don't own most of these properties, and so it's not ultimately going to be a city's decision. And I really appreciate Alderman Davalos emphasizing the flexibility of this plan because we can say we like the idea of having a land use plan that would appeal to people, that would hopefully be attractive to developers and would be attractive to residents and people who are going to be using the property in the future, but we know that the plans we put together for Cantera are not exactly what was eventually built. No matter how much you plan and no matter how much control you might have over these things, things are going to change. You also can't predict the future. We're looking at the market conditions now, and this is going to be a plan that will be in place for decades to come, you know, 20, 30 years out. People will be looking at this plan and making their choices about land use in these areas with reference to the plan, but the plan might change. So I think to only think of this in the context of TIF is a little bit short-sighted because we're talking about land use and long-term planning and hoping to predict the future of our city, which is a really difficult thing to do. We had great consultants to try and help us do it. That's what we're attempting to put together here in the form of a very detailed and well-thought-out, well-researched, statistics-based plan that could still be entirely wrong and still change quite a lot as time goes on. So I really appreciate all the hard work that our staff and our consultants and our other elected officials put into putting this together, and I really like the way that this looks and the way that it, you know, could shape Warrenville in the future. I'm excited to see what's going to happen next, so thanks so much.
Alderman Ashower?
Appreciate all the effort that went into it. We obviously had several meetings on it before it got this far. My concern with it is that, most of it's great. The exception would be that there's obviously a big reduction in what was proposed as commercial from what we are currently, and obviously, that's hard to develop because of the marketing situations, but there's a couple areas that are key, and that would be the area that's proposed residential senior housing right by the new Barclay signal, right there. That would seem to be a prime commercial spot just because of the signalization and the access. The other part is the multifamily along 59 that separates the two red zones, and it's right, it's sandwiched between the Barclay extension and 59.
Right here?
Right there. The, that would seem, that's unusual to me in the respect that with the improvements we intend to make, it makes it so convenient for businesses to function efficiently with the access on Frontage Road and on 59. It allows a level of circulation that I think would be advantageous to commercial, which is also what the comprehensive plan, or the strategic plan that we did, you know, I mean, they certainly supported a high level of commercial use. I look at the multifamily as the easiest to build, most profitable for the developers. They build it and leave, and we get whatever they build, and certainly, we have control over that, but it would seem to me that in those two parcels in particular, that some patience and some focus on commercial would make sense just because it's right in between commercial areas and surrounded by commercial areas with excellent access. That's my disagreement. The rest of it's great.
Thank you. Alderman Berry?
Yes, I'd like to thank the Plan Commission for pushing this forward. I'm so happy that all these entities got together to come up with such a great plan. As Alderman Goodman said, sometimes, like in Cantera, the plan is there, we don't always stick to it, but sometimes the things that we come up with in the future might be better than what we see right now. I am happy that we're doing this. We have our SubArea Plan, now we have a plan for this area. This is something that I looked for when I originally ran for Alderman, 2005, and I've always lived near 59, and I was always wondering when that would be able to be developed. And I'm, it's, I want to thank everybody for a wonderful job and the Community Development Department for pushing this forward, too. So thank you, Director Mensur.
Alderman Hoffman?
Yeah, pretty much, this is just an idea of which way we want to go, correct?
It's a policy document, it's not a regulatory document, it's not like the...
It's not written in stone.
The zoning ordinance is a regulatory document. People have to use land in accordance with what the zoning is on the property. This is a policy guidance document that helps the city make decisions on how the property might be zoned or rezoned.
Okay, because that way, if somebody came along and wanted to buy up 150 acres of it or because they had some kind of development that they wanted to put in, it's not written in stone, we pretty much add that into it and re-change what needed to be done in order to accommodate it.
You'd have to go through the normal zoning process, and one of the criteria of the zoning process is rezoning, in rezoning property, is how it complies with your comprehensive plan. So the policy guidance, not just the colors on the map, but the language and verbiage and the direction that's outlined and articulated in the written document is really the meat and potatoes that the city would reference if they're going to adjust the zoning on a property.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Ron, thank you. Great presentation. The plan is very well thought out, was very well received by the public at the public hearings. The flexibility, I think, is really important to recognize that going forward, there are so many things that we can't control, like with Cantera. If we look at the original plan and what actually happened, there's a huge difference there because of the market and because of how things have changed, so I think that's in it. It's incredibly important, though, the work that you're doing specifically, looking forward in terms of development, because that gives us ownership of our future. If we don't do this, we get whatever comes along, and I think we have to constantly remind ourselves that these policy documents are our plan for the future for the community. That's part of our job, a very important part of our job, that we plan for the future in a positive way. And this is a huge step in that direction. It's an area that has so many issues that unless we look at it and we handle it comprehensively, those issues are not going to be solved in a way that, long-term, is good for the community. So, again, thank you so much for the effort that goes into this. I know the amount of hours, the thought that goes into this, the consultations, the meetings, and it's very much appreciated by the entire community. I'm sure if they knew, if they had any idea of what goes into this, they would appreciate it, so I'm going to say thank you for them because I do know, so thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Okay. Okay. We'll move on to citizens' comments. We only have one person this evening, Mr. Bob Seibert.
Bob Seibert, Albright Court. The first item, I have two items to address. The first item is last fall, a number of trees were removed from Route 56. Some of these trees were removed for the first time, some were removed for the second time, some were even removed for the third time. The best time to plant trees is before they bud out. We've passed that time period. There have been no trees planted. So I'm just wondering when or if the trees will be planted and who is paying for the I know you won't answer that, but that's a question I think that you should answer because this evening, you're talking about Alderman Widener saying you should manage the new development. Well, I think it's more important to manage the responsibility that you were given by the state of Illinois for the planting of those trees. The second item is kind of a combination on the proposed development. Unlike the rest of the people, I was here 30 years ago. I was here when the first plan, the discussion went out on Cantera. It was nowhere near what we have today. It was supposed to be, and it was down commercial on the north side, it was supposed to be a walk, eat, live, and work community. We didn't get that. We lost millions of dollars in tax revenue when they eliminated four 18-story office buildings because market drives prices. They eliminated it and put an AMC theater. Oh, we could get it, you've got to change it. Then the AMC theater left. Now you've got $2 million request because Regal's having financial problems. Supposed to be office warehouse where Target is, whoop, we can change it, we're going to bring this in. Transportation wasn't there, the design for transportation wasn't there. The commercial went in, you could not get in or out of that development. Now seven of 10 commercial outlets are empty. There are situations that are causing problems that were determined simply because somebody said, "We can have market determination." You're going to go in now, you've spent money, we'll be spending money to try to change the entrance into Target? Originally, that entrance was there. Go back to the transportation design, go back to the study. They said Deal Road should be six lanes. It can't handle it. They didn't do it. Now, the city is getting forced to pay for many of these items because the majority ruled, and when people asked questions, they didn't listen. But there was one principle that was upheld throughout that development, and that was held by the people that were considered questioning things or people that were for things. That was that not $1 of taxpayers' money would be put at risk. And I bring this up because when you look at this development that you're proposing with a TIF, you can't get the infrastructure without investment. That was done in Cantera by the developer, and they received notes to get their money from what they developed after it created tax revenue. That forced initial development, that forced development to come more quickly because it was then generating money that they would get back, $60 million back to the developer. So I would suggest on this development, follow the same rules. Do not put millions of dollars in upfront. Have the developer do it, and then say, individual developers, they get their money back when they produce something for the community, not putting it forward. As you can see in neighboring Lyle, they're having trouble with a sports complex they built, don't have the revenue, refinancing, different problems. Many of the areas do not have that revenue. If the developer gets his money after he bills and gets interest, the citizens do not lose. That was the major principle in Cantera.
Thank you, Bob. And I believe we are actively managing the tree situation. Ron, could you address that, please, so people know?
Last year, there was a similar concern about the replacement of trees that had died on the, along the Route 56 corridor, and I reported that IDOT was taking responsibility to replace those trees. They did implement a phased replacement of trees last, not this spring, last spring, early summer, and at that point in time, they told us that they did not have anything scheduled or funded for 2016, but they expected to be back in 2017 to do another replacement. We have confirmed with IDOT recently that that is something that they've recently received a budget appropriation for and that they will be back out doing tree replacements in the Route 56 corridor at their expense next spring, early spring.
Great, thank you, Ron. Okay, we'll move on to official and staff comments. I have nothing for this evening. I know, it's surprising. Didn't want to take away from the presentation. Clerk?
I have nothing.
Felt the same way. I see, okay. Alderman. Alderman Goodman?
I just wanted to thank all the many people who turned out for the Warrenville and Bloom Planting Day. It was very successful, I think, as you go around town and you take a look at some of the new flowers, and as that starts growing and really developing over the course of the summer, I think everyone's going to enjoy it. So thank you to all the volunteers for your hard work.
Anyone else? Okay, City Administrator?
Two things to supplement the excellent presentation. One, there's just some information I passed out in the envelopes that you have pertains to closed session tonight. There's some supplemental information, so that can be discussed when you get to closed session, but in case I didn't get a chance to talk to you personally, that's what's in the envelopes. Secondly, just a note, I think all the council knows this, maybe the public does or maybe they don't, but just a reminder, there's been a lot of exciting changes in the city, not just at City Hall, but at the Police Department, at the Public Works Department over the last couple of months and even the last week and a half. There's some new key staff and some very, or some new staff in some very key positions. There's a lot of good things that are going to come from those changes and transitions in several departments, but I would just ask everybody to be patient with us as we get our feet under us with some of the new things. It's an exciting time, but it does take a little bit of time for the new folks to get up to speed on their new jobs, so if we could just have your indulgence for a very short time, these are very capable folks, and we'll be up and running just hopefully with even better and brighter things than we have in the past. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Attorney?
I have nothing tonight, thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you, David. Approval of the agenda for this evening, then? Alderman Widener?
I move to approve the agenda for the June 6, 2016 City Council Regular Meeting.
Second.
Second by Alderman Wilson. Any changes to the agenda? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We have a couple of sets of minutes that need approval also. Alderman Widener?
Move to approve the minutes of the May 16, 2016 City Council Regular Meeting and approve the minutes of the May 23, 2016 Finance and Personnel Committee of the Whole Regular Meeting.
Second.
Second again by Alderman Wilson. Any discussion of those minutes? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The minutes are approved, thank you. The consent agenda for this evening reads as follows. Item 6A, Accept Zoning Board of Appeals Recommendation, Wave Second Reading, and Pass Ordinance Number 3007, Approving a Variance for Accessory Structures for the Property at 28 West 610 Forestview Avenue South. B, Accept Plan Commission Recommendation, Wave Second Reading, and Pass Ordinance 3008, Approving an Amendment to the Comprehensive Land Use Plan of the City of Warrenville in the Form of the Southwest District Plan. C, Accept Staff Recommendation, Wave Second Reading, and Pass Ordinance Number 3009, For Prevailing Wages for the 2016, for 2016 in accordance with the statutory requirements. D, Accept Finance and Personnel Committee Recommendation and Pass Resolution 2016-19, Approving a Proposal from the Government Finance Officers Association to Provide Consultive Services to Assist City Staff with Phase II of the ERP Project at a Cost Not to Exceed E, Accept Finance and Personnel Committee Recommendation and Approve the Six FY 2017 Work Plans Submitted by the Environmental Advisory Commission. F, Accept Finance and Personnel Committee Recommendation and Approve the Fund Balance Recommendations Detailed in the Memorandum from Finance Director Dollstrand, dated May 6, 2016. G, Accept Staff Recommendation and Approve the Purchase of a New Public Works Flatbed Truck Through the State of Illinois Joint Purchasing Program in the Amount of $36,824 from Morrell Brothers Ford in Greenfield, Illinois. H, Accept Staff Recommendation and Designate City Administrator Christina White, Assistant City Administrator Christina White. You thought that was a quick rise, didn't you? As the city's ADA Coordinator. Good luck has its limits, Christina. I, Accept Mayor Bramall's Recommendation and Appoint Attorney Christine Sharkowitz, did I say it right?
Sharkowitz.
Yeah, not bad. As the city prosecutor for the fiscal year 2017. J, Accept Mayor Bramall's Recommendation and Appoint Kate Perkins as Chair of the Bicycleist and Pedestrian Advisory Commission for the remainder of the term set to expire on April 30, 2017. K, Receive and File Approvements of the Bicycleist and Pedestrian Advisory Commission Regular Meeting Held on April 13, 2016. L, Receive and File Approvements of the Environmental Advisory Commission Regular Meeting Held on April 19, 2016. M, Receive and File Approvements of the Board of Fire and Police Commission Regular Meeting Held on April 26, 2016. N, Receive and File Approvements of the Plan Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals Special Meeting Held on April 28, 2016, and Draft Minutes of the Regular Meeting Held on May 19, 2016. O, Receive and File Report of Invoices Paid Up to June 1, 2016 in the Amount of $87,697.69. And P, Authorized Expenditures for Invoices Due On or Before June 20, 2016 in the Amount of $181,560.11. Alderman Widener?
Move to approve the agenda as presented by Mayor Bramall.
Second.
Second by Alderman Wilson. May I have a roll call, please? Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Hoffman?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Thank you. The consent agenda is approved for this evening. We have nothing under regular agenda, nothing under unfinished business. We have not under new business. Would someone like to bring that forward, please? Alderman Widener?
Yeah, move to, I guess, bring the new business forward.
Do you want to enumerate exactly what it is?
Staff Announcement of the Availability of the Eligibility Report, the Redevelopment Plan and Project, and the Housing Impact Study, and the 7:00 PM June 23, 2016 Public Housing Impact Meeting for the Proposed Southwest Route 59 Corridor, TIF District Number Four.
Second.
Second by Alderman Wilson. Community Development Director Ron Mensah will take this item. Ron?
As I reported at the recent Community Development Committee meeting, the city and its consultants continue to work forward on the TIF IV process. It's kind of the other side of the coin from the land use planning process. We have completed the preparation of a final draft redevelopment plan eligibility analysis and housing impact study and have scheduled a public information input meeting on Thursday, June 23. The city attorney has asked that I read, the city's TIF attorney has asked that I read a specific announcement related to both the availability of the TIF plan and the upcoming public information input meeting. It reads as follows. Please be advised that the Draft Redevelopment Project and Plan Eligibility Report and Housing Impact Study for the Proposed Southwest Route 59 Corridor, TIF Number Four District, as authorized by Ordinance Number 2948, adopted at the August 3, 2015 City Council Meeting, will be available for review by the public at the Warrenville Public Library, the Community Development Department during normal business hours, or on the city's website under the business backslash business development backslash backslash TIF information page beginning tomorrow, Tuesday, June 7, 2016. City staff, the city's TIF IV consultant, and the city's TIF attorney will be conducting an initial public information and input meeting on these documents at 7:00 PM on Thursday, June 23, 2016, in the City Council Meeting Room. For additional information or questions on these documents or the upcoming public information input meeting, please contact City Warrenville Community Development Director Ron Mensah at 630-393-9050.
Okay, so if anyone has any questions on those official documents that can't be answered by reviewing those documents, give Ron a call, I'd be happy to talk to you. Any comments or questions from the council?
And I would also say that we'll be distributing a copy of that plan, that draft plan, to the city council in your inboxes tomorrow morning.
Great, okay, so everyone will have that, a hard copy. Okay, no vote is necessary in this, it's information only, and meet certain legal requirements. We're done with that. We're not done, though, unfortunately. We do have a closed session this evening. Could I have the citation, please? Alderman Berry?
I'd like to make a motion to go into closed session for the purpose of 5 ILCS 120/2, c, p, r, n, s, 1. The appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee of the public body or against legal counsel for the public body, to determine its validity. Second.
Okay, second by Alderman Goodman. May I have a roll call, please? Alderman Hoffman?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Thank you, Emily. We will not be conducting any business after our closed session this evening, so you're free to go. Thank you for your attendance this evening.